I will open this meeting in the Upshur County Commission. We will begin with a prayer, meditation, and prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. We have several appointments. We have a 9:15 appointment, Doyle Tenney and Mike Pickle, for discussion regarding statistics on prevailing wage in West Virginia and outside of West Virginia. We have a joint meeting of the Upshur County EMS and EMS and EMS and EMS to discuss the possibility of a mutual aid agreement between the Upshur County EMS and ESP. That meeting will take place at the Office of Emergency Management, I believe. Is that correct? Or will be here at the courtroom?
I believe you are already here.
Here, okay. So we move on then. Until 9:15, we have a few things to handle. I have Jackie in the minutes for my speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jackie.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, July 2, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Raferty called the meeting to order. There were President J.C. Raferty, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner Terry Wallace, County Administrator Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dent-Lawler Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of June 25, 2015, as submitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Raferty, with no second, the motion to approve Steve Abel to fill the vacant position on the Upshur County Civil Service Board, set to expire 12/31/2017, died due to life on the second. Commissioner Cutright recused himself from the vote due to personal relationship. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Deborah Barnes as temporary part-time deputy assessor, per request from Deputy Vice-Assessor. The requested salary was adjusted to the rate of $22 per hour, per agreement between Ms. Rose and Ms. Barnes. Ms. Barnes will work not more than 25 hours per week with her salary to be paid out in view of revaluation. Effective date of employment is July 13, 2015. Jerry Kimball, West Virginia Classic Wheels Car Club member, provided a review of events and activities on July 24 and 25. The fourth annual Blast from the Past crowd seats will benefit the distribution of car seats and smoke detectors for newborns at St. Joseph's Hospital. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved a donation in the amount of $250 and 10 one-day pool passes to the Bacchanal Upshur Recreational Park Pool to be used for fundraising. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the president to sign the inspection agreement with Brewer &amp; Company of West Virginia Incorporated at the annual sum of $1,600 for fire protection for the premises of the Upshur County Emergency 911. Terry Wallace requested to defer action on agenda number five until after the 10:15 a.m. meeting with Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy. J.C. Raferty reviewed the following four year information items. Number one, correspondence from Robert Pennington, P.E., Deputy State Highways Engineering Program and Planning, enclosing statewide transportation improvement plan, listing of proposed amendments to be approved, to be approved, 2014 through 2019, STIP. Two, correspondence from Stephen Hanna-Berry, Chairperson, West Virginia Court Security Board, informing Upshur County Commission, the court security fund grant in the amount of $2,360 has been approved for the purpose of enhancing the county's court security. Three, Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, the toll of tobacco in West Virginia article. Four, Upshur County Family Resource Network Newsletter, July 2015. Five, Upshur County Family Resource Network Directors' Report, June 2015. Six, agendas and their notice of meeting as listed. Seven, meeting minutes as listed. Eight, meetings as listed. Nine, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices contained, the Commission approved all application orders. Dirk Burnside did not appear for his 9:45 a.m. appointment to discuss parking lot of the Emergency Medical Services location. The meeting will be rescheduled to a future agenda. The Commission recessed at 9:47 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 10:00 a.m. Shane Zimmerman, Emergency Site Protection, AL-AL-C representative, appeared before the Commission to formally introduce Emergency Site Protection, AL-AL-C, as a new business in Upshur County. Mr. Zimmerman assured that the company does not wish to compete with Upshur County EMS, but wishes to complement and work with them. Mr. Zimmerman requested Upshur County Commission to recognize ESP as an emergency service provider and allow ESP access to the sire and radio system. This does not commit them to binding contract. Mr. Zimmerman further requested 911 to activate their services in the event that they are specifically requested and to activate their services if U.C. EMS is unavailable typically after seven minutes. Steve Linger, E911 Communications Center Director, inquired about the company's availability for backup services for the U.C. EMS. J.C. Raferty advised that a mutual aid agreement would require planning and requested Terry Wallace to set up a meeting with concerned parties. Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, appeared before the Commission concerning her pending resignation. Ms. Adams expressed her private service and accomplishment over her 18, 25 years of service and commended former and present employers and coworkers. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session at 10:27 a.m. President with J.C. Raferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Terry Wallace, Tabitha Perry, Sheila Adams, and David Kaufman. The Commission returned to open session at 10:40 a.m. No decisions are made in the executive session. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Sheila Adams contingent on a $1,000 per month retainer for a period of five to six months to be split between the sheriff's tax office salary line and the general campaign fund for the purpose of training Ms. Adams' successor. Ms. Adams' effective date for her resignation is July 20, 2015. However, she has agreed to work on a contractual basis through November or December. The Commission also approved the advertisement slash job posting application of Chief Deputy. Applications and resumes will be due by close of business on Monday, July 13, 2015. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following alterations and/or reforms as listed. Without further business, a motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 10:50 a.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes. Is there such a motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. There's still about five minutes before our first appointment, so we'll move down to items for discussion. Thank you, Jackie. Action approval. We have correspondence from Jeffrey M. Armentrow, President of the Upshur County Firefighters Association, providing three nominees for consideration to serve as a member of the Upshur County Fire Board for a three-year term effective July 30, 2015. There's currently one vacancy to fill. In view of that, correspondence reveals that the three names recommended by the Upshur County Firefighters Association to represent on the Fire Board are Cliff Shaw, Art Wilson, and Gary Bonnet. These are three names. Normally, we have five names requested. These are the three names that they have provided to us. So based on the three names provided, is there a motion to fill that vacancy with one of the individuals contained on the correspondence?
I'm moving to agree. Bill, I'm ready to see Cliff Shaw.
Cliff Shaw. He's the president of the, excuse me, chief of the Sullyville Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. We'll contact Mr. Shaw to alert, advise him of that.
And just one correction, that will be effective July 1st, not July 30.
July 1st, very good. Okay. Next, we have correspondence from David H. Kaufman, Sheriff of Upshur County, requesting the employment of Tyler A. Gordon as a probationary deputy sheriff effective July 12, 2015. Starting pay will be $17 per hour upon completion of the West Virginia State Police Academy. This will increase to $17.31 per hour. Correspondence from the sheriff indicated that Mr. Gordon has passed civil service testing, the interview, and background checks relative to this application. Is there a motion to approve Sheriff Kaufman's request for employment of Tyler A. Gordon as a probationary deputy sheriff? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Perry L. Wallace, County Administrator, requesting the employment of Sheila M. Adams as a temporary asses, effective July 21, 2015, at a pay rate of $500 per pay period. The temporary employment will continue through December 31, 2015, unless terminally acquired by either party. And this is to assist whoever, the new tax deputy that will be selected by the sheriff. This is the purpose of assisting that person in fulfilling the responsibilities of an office, acquainting them with the requirements of that position.
That's correct.
Sort of a transition period.
One change, Ms. Adams has changed her actual termination date as far as a full-time employee to July 18, 2015, rather than July 20. The reason being is that it's at the end of the week, so that will simplify payroll processes for her change from full-time hourly to the temporary salary position.
Sheriff's office, is still going to pick up part of this?
Half.
Half?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So based on that information we received from Ms. Wallace, is there a motion to approve the request for part-time temporary employment of Sheila Adams? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Stephen Linger, Director, E911, requesting employment of Christina M. Pickens as a part-time telecommunicator at the wage rate of $11 per hour and working a maximum of 29.5 hours per week, effective July 19, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that request of Mr. Linger for employment of Christina at Pickens as a part-time telecommunicator?
So, a second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. It is now at 9:15. We have an appointment, Mr. Doyle Tenney and Mike Pickle, for discussion regarding statistics on prevailing wage in West Virginia and outside of West Virginia. Doyle.
Hello. I'm going to try to get you all as fast as I can.
Take your time.
I'll take care of it.
You might want to identify yourselves for the viewing audience. We have this on camera, so you might want to identify who you are for the viewing audience.
I'm Doyle Tenney and this is Mike Pickle. And I have a letter that somebody, the other person was supposed to come. She couldn't make it because she had to go to the airport to pick up her daughter. She wrote, I'll go ahead and do that first. She wrote, it's Annette Naskin. She works at Arlington and she's an ATSSA flagger. In reference to the Record Delta article about prevailing wage in the state of Upshur County, this is my statement. I'm a registered certified ATSSA flagger. My pay rate is found on the West Virginia Wage and Labor website under prevailing wage rate as a Class III laborer, not a flagger. The rate of my pay for 2015 in Randolph County this year for my contract awarded in 2014 was $24.86 an hour. Federal portion of pay, which was fringe, was $16.30. The state, by law, does not have the right to pay that portion of pay, known as fringe, or do away with the federal prevailing wage rate if the state takes federal money for public works and/or construction projects. The only unfortunate portion of this, under Davis-Bacon, is against discretion in the fringe portion of my wages, not to the state, to my employer. The only protection for me under this is that it must be used as a benefit to the employer. She went in to say some examples of how half of her fringe goes into her 401K and half of her fringe into the paycheck. Anyway.
Would you, have you provided a copy of that for our records? If you have a copy, you can provide it to us.
We'll make one up for you.
We can. I'll go into what I will say now. I'm here today to show the members of Upshur County Commission that there is absolutely no proof that a job under $500,000 will cost more if it is done at a less than prevailing wage scale. I have also decided to educate the people of our county and anyone listening on the true economic impact of being left without a prevailing wage until September. September is the date they're supposed to have a finalized wage for contractors to bid off of. I invited two friends to come help explain the reality of the issue. Like, they're going to that death penalty, obviously, and that didn't make it. Since I've allotted 15 minutes, I'm going to go through the information as quickly as possible, and at the end, I will take any questions or concerns about any of the facts that I've read. I will start with why I believe Upshur County should implement the old prevailing wage during the time the state has decided it doesn't need one, because it will stake the wage a lot first. In our state, according to multiple economic studies, our middle-class lower wage is supposed to be $27,502, at the upper being $82,506. Now, this is coming from Business Insider, but I also have the median household income, and even on the USS Bureau, it says basically what it is. I do realize the per capita income is $19,498, but I researched a few points that make that figure seem ridiculous. Under the SNAP program, a household size of two or more could qualify for government assistance. So under that logic, that per capita income is any kind of a basis for what a working person should be paid, and the average household size is 2.5 in this county, then most of the county would qualify for SNAP and government assistance. Is this true? No. The 2013 workforce of West Virginia, average annual wage of a construction worker is $37,465. So if these construction workers are making huge wages, wages, then where are they going on the income charts? Well, some of the construction is residential, and the average work hours a construction worker gets in a year is 1,760. There's about 2,080 hours in a year of work if a person is working five, eight-hour days per week. I make about $50,000 a year, roughly. So even if it seems like I'm paid too much, I'm really just middle-class. Last year, I did very well because I was working in gas construction, which is not prevailing wage. That's, it's my same job, but it's not prevailing wage. I made about $78,000 last year, working six tens. That is by far the most money I've ever made in my life, but it came at a price. I was working all the time, two and a half hours away, so that's a five-hour drive. The now-old prevailing wage was at about the right level to make it possible for a person to be in the middle class, raise kids, good credit, buy a nice home, and pay property taxes to the county and not wasting taxpayer dollars on government assistance. I'm a firm believer in lowering taxes and getting people out of poverty. The problem I'm having with the county's ideology is that I can't find a shred of proof on anything on the side of saving taxes can be found. As a matter of fact, the only papers I've found that say it does save money for taxpayers have been funded by Charles Koch. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the Koch brothers, but a paper written by Andrew M. Dean, Charles G. Koch, Dr. O. Fellow, on the topic is strongly biased toward, to support Koch's ideology. Koch has contributed almost $1.7 million to the West Virginia University Foundation. I have a research paper on how they've been investigated for violation of academic freedom. Anyway, this paper was the paper Bill Cole used to try to convince our state that we didn't need a prevailing wage. I have two other economic impact studies that show the real effects regarding prevailing wage, or weakening prevailing wage in our state compared to other states. The studies show very good data on how taxpayers and per capita income pay more and get less. Education has a lot to do with why this effect happens. I also found a study that outlines prevailing wage regulations on contractor bid participation and behavior. It outlines many of the misconceptions about bidding practices in prevailing wage area versus a non-pervailing wage area. What I basically did to determine my conclusion was find every economic study available and read it to find out if it really passed the tax burden onto the county. The evidence shows, it shows me solid facts. There is absolutely no way that lowering or removing the prevailing wage will lower or pass a tax onto taxpayers of our county. So I'm going to go through some of these little economic studies. This one here was done, it's not for the state, but it's really not a very good one to go off of, because it's a more in-depth discussion on California. But it does show how prevailing wage works. There is no consistent evidence that prevailing wage policies impact overall construction They use the software to determine all that stuff. And it shows that the construction costs in no prevailing wage areas are actually higher than in the prevailing wage construction areas of California. And.
If you could make copies of those available, so we can make a copy.
Now, this one here was done by the West Virginia Center for Budget and Policy. And this study, to me, is a lot better than the one that was done for the Koch Foundation. It describes the commercial industrial sector of construction, not the rest. One big problem with the study that was done for the Koch Foundation was that it included residential construction costs into their figures. There was no residential electrician working in industrial or commercial electricity. They'd get shocked and probably die or something. But this one goes into what the construction costs in our state compared to Ohio, Virginia, the five surrounding states. And it says that costs in West Virginia, five neighboring states, with or, with and without prevailing wage laws, found no statistically significant difference in construction costs for elementary schools, secondary schools, and universities between jurisdictions with and without prevailing wage laws. School construction costs in West Virginia were lower per square foot than in the non-pervailing wage states of North Carolina, Ohio, and Virginia. Construction costs per square foot were $6.10 cheaper for elementary schools, $22.37 cheaper for secondary schools, and $58.52 cheaper for universities in West Virginia than in non-pervailing wage states. Studies have also shown that states that have weakened or repealed their prevailing wage laws have not experienced significant savings or job breaks. It's got a little graph there to show like the actual costs. Inflation-adjusted wages for Kansas's construction workers fell by 11% after the repeal of the state's prevailing wage law. Kansas did not build schools any cheaper than its surrounding states that still have prevailing wage laws. The West Virginia Chamber of Commerce claims, this is another thing that happened in Charleston, claims that West Virginia's prevailing wage laws cost the public a minimum of 25% more on public works paid for with public funds. It contends that West Virginia's prevailing wage rates are too high, increasing the cost of public construction projects by at least 25%. However, this claim is unrealistic. This is a pie chart with the label sheriff construction value in West Virginia showing how much a job bid basically costs. Well, if labor only accounted for 27.7% on the pie chart of total cost, then it is virtually impossible to reduce the total cost by 25% by reducing the state's prevailing wage rate. If the prevailing wage adds 25% to the state's total construction cost, like the Chamber claims, then the state should only be spending $800,000 on the project, with the prevailing wage adding $200,000 in excess costs. Therefore, the state would have to reduce labor costs from $277,000 to just $77,000 in order to eliminate the 25% increase in total costs that the Chamber claims prevailing wage adds. In other words, labor costs would have to decrease by 72% in order to reduce total costs by 25%. The decline in wage is necessary to achieve a 25% reduction in total construction cost is implausibly large. For example, a cement mason or a block hee in Genoa County would have to have his wages fall from $28.70 per hour under the prevailing wage to just $7.98 an hour, below the state minimum wage. And workers would have to be just as productive being paid $7.98 per hour as they were when they were paid $28.70. Now, this shows the residential average weekly wage versus the non-residential average weekly wage, the commercial industrial sector. For an electrician like myself, the residential average weekly wage is $766.15, and for a non-residential average weekly wage, it's $1,153.21. The difference is 50% higher for commercial industrial. And there's a reason why. I went to Fred Everly for two years and I got an electrician license. There was no way I could possibly go into a gas site or a, into a building with transformers and all kinds of stuff that could blow up in your face and just do that job. There are, I spent five years going through training to learn what I do, and I mean, that's, there is a cost to education. All right. This here is another study. That was done, the affiliated construction trades foundation, a division of West Virginia State Building Trades funded this study to, to basically go against the Koch Foundation. They were kind of aggravated that they, that he paid for that. It was done by Michael P. Kelsey from the University of Missouri at Department of Economics. He's, he's the professor down there. And it basically says the same thing. It's $50.25 cheaper per square foot in West Virginia than in non-pervailing wage states. It says almost the same data. But basically, there's no, there is no tax savings by eliminating the prevailing wage. As a matter of fact, it's going to go, the cost should go up if it's based on everything that's happened outside of the state. That's not always the case. I think there was one case where in Ohio, for really cheap elementary schools, the cost was different. So I mean, there's not really anything to be saying. The only thing you can definitely be sure is that you are cutting wages for 6% of the county, but.
When you say 6% of the county, what does that refer to?
Well, I'm assuming that there's a small, that's the construction. There's a little chart here. Basically, the most, most males in this county are employed through construction, or it is the highest employer in Upshur County. That was, I found that on some business and economics website. And then if you look at the workforce, West Virginia paper, it shows how many jobs there are too. I've got too many papers here, but I'll show you that. In females, it's actually hospitals and nursing and stuff like that.
Service industries.
Yeah. So I'll go along here. Getting into the reason why our county has a high percentage of poverty, West Virginia as a whole has the highest income transfer payments in the country, as a share of personal income, these include social security benefits, medical benefits, unemployment benefits, and income maintenance benefits. Oddly, the biggest factor, I believe, is medical and social security. We have a lot of old people. We're higher than average on all except unemployment for the country. 11% is the highest one, that's for healthcare costs. We have a lot of people that need to. We have a lot of people that need to quit smoking and go on that business, and that's why we're in poverty. One very important thing I figured out in this is that if the state does lower the prevailing wage, the cost of real estate adjusted to inflation must go down, which means property tax, the source of 70%, 80% of the county's funding, should also go down. In males, construction work accounts for 16%. That was the number of the total working men. We have 6,680 people working and living in this county, 650 of which work in construction and may have families. That goes for both residential and commercial industrial, depending on how much they may drop the wage. Why work for $25 an hour of prevailing wage when you can wire up houses as your own contractor for that? I would expect 650 homes at risk of foreclosure or car repossessions, et cetera, all these things being the main source of tax funding for Upshur County. So if taxes are not going down and wages are, in an obvious way, the taxpayers are being hidden and, and under the takeout levy. Also, there's a $20,000 exemption for people on SSI to give to people over the age of 65. The working people are the ones that pay taxes in this county. We're the ones that actually give the county its, its real money. Because we buy things, expensive things, have loans on things, have houses that we have to pay for, and we take care of families inside the house. Well, part of that's having jobs where you have the extra money to be able to do that. Like M2 Bravo, we're all leisure. You don't need any kind of aerosol care for no reason at all. You cut everybody's wage, they're not gonna have the extra money to go to M2 Bravo, to go to McFly's, to go to Anderson Outdoors. Walmart will be all right because you gotta eat, you know what I mean? But once you cut that money, then everybody loses. Eventually, businesses will go out because you cut the wages so low that you cannot, you just can't keep together. So when a business goes under, you lose the property taxes for like us, the National Guard Army, which is a good chunk of money, I assume. So you're not, you're hurting everybody. There's no way that anybody benefits out of this at all. So getting into that, moving on to the next part, which is basically $500,000 or less. I have a chart here showing the costs, the thresholds across the states showing, like the, the highest threshold being Maryland at $500,000, Connecticut being $40,000, and going down. As you get down further, we're third from the bottom in per capita income, the middle class income, all that business. So a $500,000 threshold is kind of ridiculous. It puts a state that has a lower per capita income by far in Maryland. Maryland's number one in, in middle class income. They're the number one. We're 47. So we're way down at this. And this is one study, but it's, it's pretty much, Maryland's within the top five and we're within the bottom five. Which by the way, out of the bottom five, actually out of the bottom 10, like eight of them are no prevailing wage states. So we'd be the first in an entire class of states that it just really goes against what we should be as a state. But moving on to $500,000 is an unfair threshold for prevailing wage. I have a list of all states' thresholds. Media income stands at 47 of the 50 states, which is $41,253. The only other state to have a $500,000 threshold is Maryland. Maryland stands at number one of the 50 states at $72,483. It doesn't make any sense to me. The goal, the goal is to find the spot where prevailing wage is not as cost-friendly or taxpayer-friendly. If you set it too high, taxpayers pay more, based on all the studies we mentioned. I think based on jobs I've been on, that a cost-effective point would be closer to, based on our incomes and the cost, $100,000 to $150,000. Because it's good enough to get something done, but it's not building a mansion. I also think that it's something that should be revisited every year to determine what is a good cutoff point. I don't believe it's as simple as throwing out the biggest number. A big job takes planning, and when you're looking at a job that's small, the price goes up for bigger contractors because they don't want to take the time to bid on it if it's a few dollars in profit. I honestly don't think that it would be a huge difference, but at that price, it may save the county time if they could find someone local to replace the furnace or do some minor net workings. I think that's just about all I've got.
Mr. Tenny, do you have anything to say other than what you've already expressed?
The only thing I have with the $500,000, what you'll find, it'll start happening, is instead of bidding a whole job at like $2 million, people will start breaking it down before the state bids. So each of them will be at $500,000 or less, therefore, they'll get the bus on the prevailing wage. They'll have the contractor bid it four times. I've seen it happen. So they, that's like the loophole to get out of it. You drop it so low that they can't do that, then it's actually a fair, a fair playing field for local contractors and out-of-state contractors at that point.
Have you taken a survey of the state as to which counties have indicated they will remain under the old prevailing wage rate?
We would be the first currently. Gannaw County hasn't passed anything on that yet. I'm sure Gannaw and Cabell are going to continue to support that. It's, it's beneficial to their local economy. I think that our county should do the same, just to continue paying the old prevailing wage. As a sign that we're not against the middle class, we're trying to save taxpayer dollars. Now, you're not gonna see an impact because in the first year of this happening, you're not gonna do that. This takes years, all right? Two years, three years down the road, you're gonna see massive changes if we were, if we were to repeal or lower these wages and stuff. I have a little article where Wisconsin basically is saying, well, the company came up from Georgia and they were gonna be cheaper and prevailing wage is bad because we lost taxpayer dollars. Then that company came up from Georgia to Wisconsin to get higher wages. That's bad. That's not a good thing at all. Like, you should be protecting your local economy. Local workers, not giving into Georgia. I mean, that's, that's what prevailing wage was about. It was about trying to make the market friendly to local economies. You can't go, if New York went without prevailing wage, there would be nobody in New York working, and every house up there would go down in value pretty quick because, you know, these people in Alabama and Louisiana, these southern states that don't have their right to work, no prevailing wage and all this business, they make $11 an hour. If they can come up to New York and make $30 an hour, they're making a lot of money in their own local economy. That's where the problem is with all this. West Virginia being a northern state surrounded by high-wage states, all right? We have to keep our wages high or these states just the same will come up here from the south and take our work. It's not rocket science to me, it's pretty simple.
Mr. Tenny, I have a question, just to clarify. Are you asking the Upshur County Commission to simply declare that they will continue to pay prevailing wage for Upshur County Commission projects or set a law for the entire county to pay prevailing wage?
Whatever the county is capable of doing, whatever the old law was, I understand that the threat, there was no threshold before.
Correct. We, we had instances wherein anything that we put out was prevailing wage with public money. Now, there was an instance I'm aware of where a volunteer organization that receives public monies was able to have some work done on the building that they occupied, and they entered into an agreement with some local individuals for a specific rate. The job was completed and then it was determined that rather than the private organization funds being used, it was public funds being used. So then they had to go back and recalculate the pay for the individuals that did that, did her job. The issue for us as a commission is that we are responsible for expenditure of public monies, which indicate are tax monies. We operate strictly, most of our money comes from property tax. People that are taxpayers that pay property tax and then entrust the commission to make decisions on the expenditure of those funds in a prudent and responsible manner. When the statute was changed earlier this year, which you're discussing, which you are advocating against by the state legislature, it places us in a position where, you know, we have to make a decision. We have to make decisions on expending public funds. And if you recall, a year and a half, two years ago, I guess about a year and a half, our budget, we were a $400,000 shortfall from our previous income was, so we had to tighten our belt quite substantially. I imagine in the course of your own life, when you, you know, it's not that I'm not sympathetic to what you're saying, and in many degrees, but from my perspective, it's incumbent on us to spend for whatever we expend public monies for, to try to obtain the most efficient, cost-efficient results. No more than different than a family. If a family can shop at two locations for the same product or roughly the same product, most families are going to purchase the product that is reasonable to them, that meets their needs or necessities, but is more financially viable. It's, I think, trying to sort through this, it's very simple and difficult. It is difficult, as you, I appreciate, and I know the sincerity, which you, you know, have done your studies, and, but again, we always have conflicting reports, you know?
I will say that...
The old story is, and what numbers, what is it? Numbers, I shouldn't even figure, but, you know, figures are always open to interpretation as to how you, you know...
I have words to indicate what I have said. And I, like I said before, this is me looking at every study. There are only two that suggest negative impacts or the positive impacts. So there's no, and there's a lot more data. There will tax and cost effectiveness and locally economy efficiency there, it's all...
I know that you've expressed your concerns to the members of the commission as well. I believe they, well, I can't believe for them, but I, you know, do any other commissioners wish to comment?
No, I think we're a little territory of responsibility.
It's, it's not often an easy job. As one commissioner has said, every Thursday when we make a decision, they disappoint someone, except we just use the word disappoint. Disappoint someone. But we do have our responsibility. And I, as I understand your concerns, I really do understand your concerns. I would hope you understand our concerns as well, because responsibility that we have we take seriously. We see, we see all too often state government, nations, you know, in today's world, where if fiscal responsibility for the public isn't handled in a proper way, it can lead to serious results that affect many, many people beyond just those who are involved. And making a decision to follow what the legislature has mandated. If we made a decision that in projects under $500,000, we would put them out for bid and accept the lowest qualified bidder. We have very few projects at the county level that will be over $1 million. I don't know that either. It would be forthcoming. That would be over $1 million, but certainly they comply with the law. There is some indication that our reasoning was that the organizations responsible for providing information to establish prevailing wage rates was not forthcoming. Is that your understanding as well?
What actually happened was they requested the data and they got exactly what data they wanted. The problem was that it wasn't in their best interests, the data.
Their best interest being whose best interest?
Well, the GOP, down there, what they wanted was, personally, to be few, and what they wanted was to see a wage decrease, a cut in half or something. And they didn't get that. Whenever you're looking at per capita income, you know how that was, that, that's what they're hoping for, all right? They want to see something like that, all right? That's not reality, but the reality is that you have educated people sitting on these jobs. I'm not saying all of us are equal in the construction force. I mean, obviously, if you're painting a building or whatever, there's a big difference between painting a wall and, and word of...
Learning words, right?
Yeah, but it's...
Learning skills.
But they didn't get what they asked for, and I think, I think that is the real reason why they said no, that it's gonna work. And I also believe they wanted to see this state without a prevailing wage for a while. I don't understand what they're thinking down there, but...
Well, to that end, of course, we are, I've said a number of times, legislature mandates the county commission. We are a creature of the, of the state legislature. We're authorized to do, we have little authority, if any, outside what the legislature, state legislature authorizes, county commissions in general to do.
That's why I was asking if you're requesting that the commission make the entire county a prevailing wage county or just simply commission projects, because they wouldn't have the ability to require a private contractor to pay prevailing wage. They personally could request that any other construction projects that they need completed on their property be prevailing wage, but they couldn't require that of any other...
Well, then, that is what I'd like to see, emotion, to see some of the Upshur County, whatever the Upshur County can pay to be prevailing wage. Except I do understand the threshold issue. I don't think the threshold should be $500,000. I think it should be more likely close to the actual cost-effectiveness area, which is probably between 100 and 200. I can't say exactly what it would be. That's something that I don't think anybody can really say. I think they just throw out numbers based on what I've seen, but being number one at $500,000, Maryland, and being 47, that is a monster threshold.
I guess it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a satisfactory answer, I know, but the remedy is to, is the electoral process. The remedy to address your issue that you're talking about, the way in which the statute is worded and how it impacts on prevailing wage, how it impacts on public expenditures of counties and cities that have the responsibility for public works or whatever, is through the ballot box, is through the, through the, you know, franchise.
But the county commission does have the authority to, to enact its own rules.
We can, we, under the, under the existing, as I understand it, existing statute or legislation regarding prevailing wage, we can, you know, maintain prevailing wage, but I do not believe it is the, has been stated in the previous two votes, it is not the will of the county commission, Upshur County, to, to follow that request. We, to a person, believe that expenditure of public funds should be done in a very prudent and fiscally responsible manner. And if the law allows, which it does allow, that contracts under $500,000 are not required to be prevailing wage, we've taken a position that we will put those contracts out for bid, and that the, you know, lowest acceptable qualified bidder would be, would be the one that received the contract. We've done many projects, quite frankly, in the past, non-blocks projects, where we've used our own staff and crew that work for the county to do projects for construction within their courthouse complex or on county property as a means of saving money for the taxpayers. Unless you sit this branch up here and have, have to answer to the public, that there'll be people today that will approach us or call us on the phone who will be upset that we did not, I accept your argument, and there'll be people that will call us and say, thank you for saving the taxpayers money. It's not always a black and white issue. It always isn't something that you can, you know that immediately when you make a decision that you've made the right decision. What it is that you hope in, in conference with each other when we make these decisions, when we bring our, our own experiences, our own ideas of governance to, to... when we bring our, our own experiences, our own ideas of governance, to make a decision, and we do that, which is in the best interest of everyone, not just a segment. But, you know, it's easy for me to sit here and say I'm sympathetic to your position, and yet vote contrary to your position, because there's two, there's two, there's two tugs here. One's sympathy for the working man wanting them to make a good living wage, but the other side is, I have to make a decision, we have to make decisions that are proper for the benefit of the entire county.
We just wanted you to hear.
Well, and I know that each of us appreciate that. Appreciate your hearing.
Absolutely.
And we always, and I've said before, and other commissioners have said, saying that we want the public, there'll be issues that this whole courtroom will be filled with people who have opinions and ideas about different issues that are presented before us. That's what government's all about. As long as we, you know, you are exercising what few people seem to have an idea about today. You're coming forward with, you know, a grievance or a position that you advocate because you have passion for that. Many people don't even vote today. What was the last percentage of vote we had in Upsher County last election? Twelve percent? Twelve percent?
He hasn't voted.
I haven't voted.
Twelve percent of the people in this county voted in the last election. And yet, when you're voting, you're electing people like us to represent them. We're imperfect in many ways, I know that for a fact, but it is what it is. It is the system that we have. And people like yourselves can come up and make your representation. I appreciate that, because that is what this essence of what we have in this country is all about. God forbid we ever lose it. Be careful. More people need to be involved. To that degree, I know you're disappointed in what I've said, and I'm sorry for that. I truly am. But it has been the decision of the commission. It's most likely gonna be the decision of the majority of commissions in the state, because the financial situation you bank is reality, and we have to respond to that reality. I wish it were not so, but, you know. But I think, as much as you've supported your position here, I think your voice should be brought to a different level. As I've said, the franchise, your ability to vote, to change, change the legislature, change the representation that you have in the legislature. That is what the answer is to the questions you raise. I don't know. Anyway, any other commissioners have any statements? Mr. Kimball?
Jerry Kimball. While you mentioned something about people that were on social security...
Yes.
About taxes. I'm on social security. I pay taxes on my house, my garage, my property, three vehicles, and, you know, I mean, just the same as everybody else does.
Yeah, but what I was getting at with that wasn't that it didn't have to do with whether or not a person on social security is below or above anybody else. It's, you get a $20,000 home state exemption, all right, so you pay less in taxes versus property. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that working people don't get any exemptions. They have to pay their taxes.
I went through that, too.
Yeah. So, that's why I was saying the majority of property taxes come from working people.
We pay our benefits.
Yeah.
Mr. Tenny, Mr. Pickle, we do appreciate your taking the time to come and make your presentation to us.
Did you all have anything else?
Now, I do appreciate you all taking the time out of your busy schedule, and I know you all that we have had conversation and referenced this, and how you come into the county commission. But with that being said, I think you brought several points, at least to me, that I was unaware of. But with that being said, if there is a bid here, you all may have it's over a certain amount, 15,000, we have to put it out for bid. And I know the union's not concerned about anything, 20 or 25,000, they're wanting major jobs.
It's not just the union, it's ownership, too, it's everybody.
But with that, with that being said, I'm sure that if the union would come in with a bid, you all may, that was less than a labor contractor here, that that bid would be accepted by this commission, you all may, because we do look at the lowest bid. And we're all concerned about doing the best we can for the citizens of Upsher County, all three of us. And I understand your point, the more money you make, the bigger house, the more taxes you pay, the more money you spend at Walmart, Kroger's, all the places in Upsher County, which makes a business spot. I see that point, too, and we all see that point. But with that being said, we all have to do what we think is best, you all may, for the citizens of Upsher County.
Yeah. I kinda understand, but I totally disagree. I feel like there's a tax fact method, and then there's a political belief policy that most people have.
If you were sitting here...
If I was sitting there, I would take...
If you were sitting here, then you might have a different... I'm not saying you would have a different, but there may be other issues that come to bear to help you formulate an opinion. As Mr. Brady has said, Commissioner Brady has said many times since his election, until you sit here in these three seats, you really don't know what the job is. You can think you know what it is, you can anticipate what it is during a campaign or from talking to people that have sat here, but until you personally occupy the position of one of these three seats, and have to make the decisions, and have to disappoint people, and have to help people, people that are positively affected, every issue has its, every issue appearing before us has its detractors and supporters, and it's not easy. You sometimes lose friends. You sometimes lose people you thought were your friend because of a decision you've made. But as long as you believe the decision you made is the right one for the most people, the one that people have put you here to serve, that's how you're able to...
This girl, she's, she's non-union, and she's also...
It's not a union issue.
I'm just sugar puffing.
No, it's not a union issue.
Just throwing that out there.
I can assure you.
There are people out there, 70%.
This is not a, this is not a non-union issue. This is strictly, from my perspective, trying to be efficient, most cost-effective for the public's money, the public's funds. That's, that's the only issue. I'm not, I'm not, if the issue, the non-union issue, or the union is not, my decision is not bear on that. Strictly a matter of economics, trying to do the most with the least in terms of your budget.
And if you did a survey, I don't think you'd find anybody out there in Upsher County that wouldn't like to be making more money, living in a better home, driving a bigger car, have more money to spend here in Upsher County. If you did a survey, everybody would want that.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I have a short recess so I can make this call in?
Sure.
Yes.
About 10 minutes. Thank you, Kimball.
Thanks, Dol.
Okay, we'll return for recess. We are now back in open session for county commission. Our next appointment, as I stated earlier, is at 2:00 with the County, Upsher County EMS and ESP, relative to a mutually agreeing, possible mutually agreement. So, our next item for discussion, action, approval is correspondence from Laura Ragland, who is with West Virginia Matters, which is an environmental group, I believe, requesting a response to questions relative to emergency planning and water quality regarding Atlantic Coast Pipeline and Mountain Valley Pipeline. That response has been prepared by our Director of Office Emergency Management, and it has been sent to Ms. Ragland, I believe, in response to that. A copy of that response is located in the agenda minutes for, for the public to come in and say... Not agenda minutes, the agenda, today's agenda.
The copy of the response is not in here because that was just compiled, drafted yesterday.
Oh, it's not just yet, okay.
So, I can't provide you the copy of it.
Okay, very good. Okay, I didn't require any action. Okay, we have approval of the West Virginia Division Highway Structures Division General Sketch Sheet, dated July 2, 2015, for repair of the youth camp, where the bridge is located on page 14. Review that schematic blueprint.
This was a stipulation of a contract you signed for the repair, that you would approve a sketch, so that's why this is not due.
And it has been submitted by the West Virginia Division Highway Structures Division, and indicates apparently that some of the foundation has issues with concrete, and therefore the sketch refers to, from a layman's perspective, a repair of some of the concrete developments and structures. Is that how you interpreted?
Thanks, Doug.
Have you had a chance to look at it, Daddy? Is that your interpretation?
Yes. Mine, too.
Stalling some wire mesh, hangers, and forms for MC Crete, so... Having said that, is there a motion to approve the sketch provided by the West Virginia Department of Highways relative to the repair of the youth camp, where the bridge?
Stand by.
Say a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close things, aye, motion carries. And we have a notice, approval for a notice effective July 1, 2015, regarding utilization of emergency operations center. This is a notice which has been submitted to various organizations, which are using and have used the meeting room at the 911 Center, changing some policy relative to access to that location. This is in consideration of increasing the security that facility is required by both the Criminal Justice Information Services security policy, that is the FBI Criminal Justice Information Services Center, which we utilize for running record checks, criminal record checks, and stolen property checks. They do require that the facility where this computer terminal located be maintained in a secure manner, and also the security policy, National Infrastructure Protection Plan, which I believe is under FEMA. So, in order to ensure that we comply with grants and contracts we've entered into with various agencies, this require us to effect some change to the access policy to the 911 Center. So, having stated that, is there a motion to adopt the policy for the reasoning that I set forth, is set forth, and a notice, printed notice as well?
Um...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close things, aye, motion carries. Of course, part of that is that any organization that would be affected by this has the option of using the commission chambers for their meetings if necessary, and plus, there is no other commission members being at that time. Next, we have for your information items, correspondence from Michael Eddie Albert, General Public Service Commissioner of West Virginia, appointing Jacqueline McDann, excuse me, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Upsher County Salt Coast Authority, to a term expiring June 30, 2019. We have correspondence from Charles McKinney, Assistant Chief Inspector, Chief Inspection Division of the Office of State Auditor, setting forth a report applying agreed-upon procedures of the Upsher County Magistrate for the period ending December 31, 2014. This report being made available for public review in the Upsher County Commission Office. We have correspondence from Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor, approving a SSTOP, or Stop Violence Against Women Act, grant to the Upsher County Commission, the amount of $30,700. We have correspondence from Governor Earl Ray Tomlin, approving a Community Corrections Program grant to the Upsher County Commission, the amount of $204,676. We have a article funded, provided to the county commission, requested to be put in our agenda by the Tobacco Protection Coalition, Upsher County Organization, which sets forth the economic impact of cigarette butt litter. It's an article that they provided to the commission for approval, or for our placement in the agenda, not for our approval. The Upsher County Building Permits for June 2015, which I think came out to over a million and a half dollars in construction permits provided during 2015, which is always a good sign of people fixing their homes or building new homes or businesses. We have invitation to the Upsher County Development Authority Board of Directors, made to be held August 5, 12:00 PM, and that's going to be at the Conference Center, I believe, on Brushy Ford Road. We have Upsher County Health Department Newsletter for July 2015. We have agendas and notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes of various meetings that are upcoming, that many of the meetings are attended by members of the commission or our staff here in the month, various boards that we are assigned. The appointments need are upcoming for various boards, and the next regular meeting will be a week from today, on July 16, 2015. Is there any additional business pending before the commission at this time from the public? If not, we will take care of our bills.